Call for order, the March twelfth Foxfire Village Council meeting. I'd just like to make a record that all members of the council are present. So please observe, join me in observing the room in silence. Join me in pledging the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular business meeting and the regular business meeting.
Understood.
Second session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, motion to approve.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're on to public comment period. So this is comments limited from the audience on items not listed on this agenda. Are there any comments from the audience? Being done, move on to departments reports. Mary, Councilman Gilroy.
Can I add something?
Oh, I should have said changes to the agenda. I am very sorry. Changes to the agenda.
Open positions. I'm just gonna head.
You want to do that under new business?
I can do that, yeah, that's fine. Yep, you bet.
So the new open position.
Yep, alright, so on the financial report.
Wait, can we back up to what's?
Sorry.
Motion to approve the changed agenda.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto department reports, Finance, Councilman Gilroy.
If you look at the reported cash balances, this is for the month ending February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. The general fund balance on hand to date, three million, one hundred fifteen thousand, nine sixty two. Reserves, one point four three five million, six hundred thirty, six hundred thirty eight. In the water fund, we have a balance on hand, one million, two hundred, two thousand, eight hundred ninety five dollars. Reserves, two hundred forty seven thousand, three ninety. Of course, those reserves, yeah, I'm going with that, don't worry. My favorite gives us a total on hand, four million, three hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and twenty five cents, of which one point, one million, six hundred eighty three thousand, twenty eight dollars and eighty eight cents is reserved. That's, I like that position. My best part of the whole sheet, year to date, capital trust dividend, one hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and four bucks.
Wow.
That is, that is just monstrous review.
And thank you for arranging that, Janice.
Yes, yes, Janice, thank you for arranging that.
But that's my next road. I think that would be the thing, that's all I have.
Any questions on that?
No, not for me.
Okay. The next thing is the Moore County property tax agreement, and we discussed this at the work session very briefly. There were a couple of questions. I went back to Sharon Westbrook at the county. One of the questions we had was about early collection. She told me, no municipality they collect for gives a discount for early payments, so that's not even an issue. We had asked about releases and that kind of thing, and she said that basically that's like properties get released out of probate, those kinds of things, they get approved by commissioners, there's really not much to it. So unless we have an objection, I would like to make a motion to move forward, get the final contract from the county, get it signed and get it in if we're gonna work with them for the upcoming property tax season, they need it by the first of April. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Also get that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright. And then onto the twenty four, twenty five budget. What I'd like each of us to do is go through by department, look at your annualized, look at your variance and see what you look like. And then be aware of any expenses you think are gonna drop before the end of June, okay? Something unexpected, a number that you're expecting to come in that we don't have on this sheet. And then the other thing I would ask you to do is as you look into twenty four, twenty five, if you have new or emerging requirements, new or emerging requirements, be sure and bring those to the work session, because we're gonna start department, line by line, precept and start knocking it out. Any questions?
Can we do what we did last year with Janice and sit down with you individually?
Yeah, that's fine, you wanna do that ahead of time?
Yeah, cuz that helped me.
By me.
That way we kinda talked about it and.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Yep, just text me or something.
Yeah, we'll pick a time and.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine.
That way I can kinda act.
Cuz you probably have more emerging requirements than anybody.
Yeah, I know, but cuz I work, you know.
Okay, any questions on that process? That's it.
It's a joke. Okay, any questions for Mary? Okay, moving on to streets and parks.
Okay.
Janet.
Um, for the streets, I have sent out two emails to companies that do pavement condition surveys. I wanna get some quotes for this coming year. The last condition survey we had on our roads was done in two thousand and five.
Ooh.
Yeah, so I just did that today because of, and so they're gonna get back to me with some quotes. And we need to decide to do that. And it strongly suggests we do that for this coming fiscal year. One of the things that we already have for two thousand, twenty four, twenty five is the next road that will be paved is going to be Pine Tree Terrace, we signed that two years ago. And that's gonna be ninety nine thousand dollars. That's the one road. And then for two thousand, twenty five, twenty six will be Pine Ridge Drive, which is on the east side. And that road will be a hundred thousand. And so we'll go from there. Let's see, what else do I have?
Did you, did you say when you expected Pine Tree to?
This year.
Well, but you don't know when.
No, I'm thinking probably August. Well, he hasn't put us on the schedule yet.
Okay. Janice, what was the name of the survey we're having done?
It's called a pavement condition survey. What they do is they survey every single road and provide an analysis as to which roads in order need work. And when I spoke to them, you know, I explained our situation is that we have, number one, most of our roads are cul-de-sacs. Number two, our main road, like Woodland Circle, I explained that even though they may put a road, let's say number five, there may be homes that could still be built on that road, and we're not gonna prioritize that road until down the road. So, you know, we'll be taking that into consideration too as to what, how many lots are available on a specific road that could be buildable. And, you know, for example, South Shamrock was paved, repaved in two thousand and nineteen, and we're already spending money on filling cracks.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, that road's not very old at this point in terms of being repaved.
Yeah.
So even though we get that survey back, we'll have to determine based on how many open lots are available on any specific road as to what, how we wanna prioritize. But we, we need that survey. Uh, go ahead.
Janice, the other thing I have is, when you get a start date, say for Pine Tree Terrace and Pine Ridge, could you let Jesse know that's what's happening, that they paved over the valves?
Okay.
Oops. The other thing is, another layer of pavement down, we really shouldn't put, there'll be rises, rings to bring the, up to the level.
Okay, who would do that, us or them?
Most water departments do it on their own, they got people available to do that. For us, we just want Jesse to be aware of it, so he can know what they're at. We could probably have the contractor put it down, talk to the contractor, just ask if, does it help the rigs, the cans, just the extension on the can.
Alright, well, what I'll do, when I get the date, I'll connect Jesse with.
That'd be great.
Her, and they can discuss that, so we get the correct.
Yeah, we don't want to pay owners, just.
Yeah.
Does, does he need time to get equipment in here, or get materials in here?
The only thing is, if, if Turner doesn't have, they, they probably do have extension cans, but he doesn't have them yet, there's gonna be, we'd have to, like, at least a couple of weeks ahead of time.
Okay, well, I normally know at least two months.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Before they're gonna do the building. Okay, so remind me.
Okay.
In case I forget.
Alright.
Let's see, I think that's really, uh, sorry, I was gone, so, oh, just as an FYI, in case anybody didn't hear, I think it was discussed that I was going to approach Spectrum to get a credit for the installation charges for our wifi. And I spent two hours on the phone yesterday, and they will be crediting us three hundred dollars, plus another entry. So, yeah, yeah, I have a good job. Took care of that one. That was fun. No, she was very nice, but it took a while. Uh, other than that, now I'll check into the wifi here tomorrow. Other than that, I'm sorry, I really don't have a lot more. Oh, I know, the burn.
Yeah.
I'll get there, thank you. So this is gonna be a problem. Spoke to Jesse Weatherly. Weather.
Wimbley.
Wimbley, thank you. They do not, as he says, start the match. I spoke to Eric, our fire chief. They do not start the match. So when I talked to Jesse again today, and I, I had a name of someone that does burns, uh, he has not returned my call. And I spoke to Jesse about it, and I said, Jesse, I don't think he's gonna call me back, but can you give me a name of someone else? He said, the biggest issue you guys are gonna have is that you've only got about six acres. And no one wants to commit to six acres. It's too small. I said, okay. He said, but here's what we could do. If the village is willing to start the match, light the match, I'll be there, and Eric did say they would be there to keep it under control if it gets out of control. But they, for liability reasons, will not light the match. I said, I'll be more than happy to light the match, let's just get it done.
Do we need to get it done?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, based on what his presentation was, to keep that, the new roads coming up and so on and so forth. So I'm gonna be talking again, Jesse's gonna call me tomorrow, we'll talk a little more about it. But it, it's a liability issue for everybody. They don't wanna take on that liability of lighting the match.
But the fire department will be there?
Yes, and I saw Derek, but again, they don't want to light the match. But what helps us is that in the two areas that we have, we have the walking pass as, as a buffer. So it shouldn't be a problem, and if they're there, I think, and it's not a big area that they have to burn, they'd be able to put it out quickly. So, let me meet with Jesse and we'll discuss getting it done. We're not, he asked me about moving forward with doing, taking down more areas, and I said, we haven't gotten to that point yet, so. Okay? Uh, I'm sorry, that's all I have for now. Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Onto public safety, Councilman Nelson.
Okay, the fire department, I gotta read out what he's done so far this, uh, year. So far for the year, they've had twenty nine calls in Foxfire. And sixty five percent of them are for EMS, and fourteen percent is for good intent. And ten percent for five fires they had in the village or in the area. And right now, in our station, twenty seven percent of the calls are for us, and seventy three percent is for West End.
That's lower than, I would say, right?
Well, I'll give you a comparison, two thousand twenty one, the calls here were thirty one percent. Two thousand twenty two is thirty five percent. Last year was thirty, and this year so far is twenty seven percent.
That's a hard to compare right there.
And its response time is seven point six nine seconds. And then it's six nine seconds, seven minutes, sixty nine seconds. So that's all I have for the fire department. And Mary and I are gonna start negotiating with West End Fire, first part of April to get our numbers in for next year. So that's it for the fire. The police, Lieutenant Gardner is up.
Alright, so for the year, we've run a total of one thousand, seven hundred fifty two calls for service, thirty three ordinances, which was eleven trailers, one boat, twenty one political signs, one case of illegal burning, illegal parking, and a dog complaint, dog running large. Let's see. So far, we have three hundred and twenty two citations. As far as the all wheel drive charger, I spoke with our representative from corporate the other day. She said, unfortunately, the one part that they said the vehicle needs now ran out of warranty at three years, thirty six thousand miles. So, and they're not willing to be able to get wheel apart for us.
No, what they did, charging like thirteen hundred dollars is that.
That was for another part.
That was not where they wanted you.
Right, that was for another part. That, um, they said would fix the problem.
Which it never did.
Which it never did.
Then why are we not going back to them and saying, look, you didn't fix the problem, I'm sorry, you told us that we'd fix it, and we're not, yeah, and we're not paying it.
Right, and we told them it didn't fix the problem, we needed them to fix the problem. And when we called to ask about the car, they had to go jump it off because they haven't tested since the last time I called them to.
Have we gone to him in person?
Oh, yeah, several times, several.
I'd love to go.
I'm going, but, um, when I get back next week, I'll, I'll talk to the service managers and ask them what is.
Yeah. This is, by far the worst service department I've ever dealt with.
Which one is it?
Leaf, Leaf. And so.
I'm surprised.
Um, not once have they called me. Go ahead.
And who, okay.
And we've got a case number, and they contacted them and everything.
They contacted Leaf? And how did that conversation go?
That the part's not gonna be goodwill.
Okay, now, I'm, is that the part that they said they would fix the car?
The part they're saying that the car needs now is, they said the steering has a mechanism, has a leak.
Okay, my question is regarding the part that they said would fix the car.
Right.
That they're charging us thirteen hundred for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's my question. Was corporate brought in regarding that charge?
Oh, yeah, they've been told about every charge.
Okay, what was the conversation between corporate and Leaf regarding the part that they said would fix the car?
I haven't, well, yeah.
Okay, that's number one we need to dispute.
And, and you can dispute it.
Oh, yeah. Well, we have, many times spoke with them and told them that we are very unhappy that we don't think we should have to pay for part that obviously did not fix the car. When we got the car back, it was worth more than fifty.
Okay, now, does corp, did, did you have a conversation with corporate regarding? And what did they say?
They said that they didn't have to get back with.
Alright, well, we need to get back in touch with corporate and say, what's going on at this point? Because it's been months now, and we would like this resolved.
But corporate's been there since August of last year.
Okay, well, and I'm talking about the thirteen hundred dollars right now. You can keep going higher and say, look, we need this resolved, they, they're charging us thirteen hundred dollars for a part that they said would fix this car, has not fixed this car, we do not wanna pay this. So that needs to get resolved, and you, if you go high enough at corporate, it'll get resolved.
Open up.
I mean, if you want some help with this, I'd be more than willing to help.
Alright, that's all I have.
Thank you. Now that's all I have.
I got this big one. I don't know how that happened, I'm so sorry. Did we miss you? Yes, we did. I thought you and I were moving, I know, but I skipped right over him, I went from streets to. Little line right there, didn't help. Okay, now, moving on to, um, water department.
Alright, just a brief update on the new proposed well. As reported in previous meetings, you know, the test well was built by Charles Underwood. Water quality analysis were completed, good, good results. And recently, we obtained a well construction permit from the state. MBD consulting engineers, they were under contract with Underwood, submitted the report last, submitted the application last month, and the state has actually processed it. And, uh, on the permit, the, does start, an estimated start date of April first, estimated completion date of September first. And so I've talked with Jesse and anything that the village, anything that we can do to expedite the project and wanna stay involved in it and stay in top of it.
Now, is that just for the well and not the wellhouse, or is it just?
It's all in one contract.
So.
And the state's, the state's approving, yes, the state has approved the, the construction of the well, which includes everything on site. Uh, the state will, next step is the state will send out one of their engineers just to walk the site. But, and that's, they're working with, Gugan is the, uh, the consulting engineer, and they're setting up a meeting soon as possible to get that done. One other thing that, within the last week or so, signed a purchase order with Stanford Electrical Contractors to replace the control panels and the hookups for the electrical, or for the chemical and the mixers at the wellhouses. And Jesse had gotten three, had sent out proposals, or sent out requests for proposals, the three contractors, and only one responded, and that was Stanford Electrical. And they, we chose them on a recommendation of Charles Underwood. Uh, they do a lot of Underwood's work for them, and since Underwood's doing the construction of our new well, I was trying to build up a, a, kind of a relationship with them to do our minor electric stuff. So, uh, next week, uh, they should be in, here to start doing their replacement of some of the minor electric facilities. And the, what we did, it was not a separate, we had four separate budget items, and we were able to draw off of those four separate bu, budget items to cover the cost of the, of replacements. I don't just need to be brought up with council, but, um, this week, we're gonna prepare a purchase order for new meters, something that they do on a routine basis. We're also gonna buy the replacement encoders and the endpoints, those on top of meters. We send those in, and we get a, a credit on the next bill, so that's gonna take place this week. And the final thing I just wanted to mention to council is that the, uh, the water department vehicle, I believe it's a two thousand twelve SUV that we, was passed down from the police department.
Yeah.
Um, well, the rear end's gone in it, and so we've got estimates, it's sitting up at an auto repair shop in Seven Lakes, and we do have repair costs on it, and repairs are just about, almost the same cost of what the vehicle's worth today. The blue book on that vehicle's not very much, cuz it's got a hundred fifty thousand miles on it. Uh, I just said it's, uh, so I don't know, that's something we wanna take up as a discussion, or whether it can just be. We, the plan was to put, to replace the vehicle next year, put that in our budget for next year.
How much is the, uh, repair?
Repair's gonna be, it could be anywhere from fifteen hundred up to three thousand, fifteen to three, two thousand is, if you just take a junk rear end and swap them out, to get a rebuilt rear end, it'd be about three, three thousand over three thousand, yeah. The vehicle's only worth about five grand.
That's the problem.
Yeah, three to five grand.
Do you even want to put it in there just to? Well, I think we probably do because we need a vehi, I mean.
He needs, he needs vehicle, right.
We're getting a new vehicle.
Pardon?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we fix what we have, it's not like Jesse goes across country, you know what I mean?
No.
Yeah.
I'd fix it.
Yeah, see if they can get, you know. We could squeak another year out of it.
Okay.
Because it'll probably be.
Alright, we'll go ahead and just, um.
Is it in the budget for next year? No, there is no budget for vehicles.
Next year.
I mean, to, are we thinking about?
Yes, yes, it was, um, I had talked to, um, a previous council member who was over the water department, and that's one of the suggestions he had, and if we make sure, uh, the vehicle has, is that the end of the slide?
Yeah.
Just go ahead.
Well, we got a couple of others, a year out of it, and you're an. Well, the only question I have is if there are any police vehicles that, the SUV type vehicles that.
Well.
There's one of Leaf's are, well, no, that's a charger.
Uh, we do have the Explorer, but it's still, we can use it this time. Full force right now, with the full force, we did, yeah, we need it right now. So if we budget a new vehicle, but at least next year, then one will be available.
Would it be better to get a new vehicle for the police and then?
Well, that's what we, that's what we're thinking about doing, getting another vehicle for the police department, and then that Explorer that they've got, come down to the water. But.
How many miles on that?
About a hundred.
Well, I'm sure, yeah.
Uh, about a hundred and seventeen.
Do we know what the life might be on that? Well, they could, who knows, I mean, especially with the water department, it's not like they're chasing down speakers.
Right.
I'd rather see the police have the new car. Oh, definitely.
Sure, that, that would be a higher price.
At this point, this needs a good tune-up, and it should be fine.
Okay.
Alright, well, we'll then just, uh.
We need to fix that.
Alright, we'll get repaired maybe.
And then we'll, we'll see how much money you have for next year.
How much you wanna pay for that Explorer? No, we're not gonna give it to you.
Alright, moving on.
Okay.
We're so stinky here.
That's all I have.
Any questions for, um, water? No? Okay, now we're on to the mayor's report. First item on my report is the SMPO update. Last meeting, we discussed the fact that I was gonna be resigning from the SMPO due to, um, an ethics questionnaire that was asking some pretty, um, detailed in, information, intrusive information on, um, public holdings that, um, any of us have. And at this point, no one on the council is willing to enter into that ethics agreement, which I don't blame you. The issue now is, and I've been approached by the chairman of the SMPO, as well as one of the county commissioners, to, um, think about if we wanna be a non-voting participant in the SMPO. Uh, I don't really know what that means. Other than we get to go to meetings, sit at the table, voice our opinions, but we don't get to vote. And the fact that we only had one vote out of nine or ten, it, our vote probably wouldn't carry much anyway.
Right.
Um, but I think it might be of value to be a non-voting member of the SMPO. And again, at the next SMPO meeting, which I think is more, it's next week, if I'm not mistaken, next Thursday? I think it's next Thursday. If, they'll explain exactly what a non-voting member is. So, because really what I think we have to think about is, this council is not prepared to enter into that ethics disclosure, but that doesn't mean that future council members may not want to do that. And it's, um, I think for Foxfire, and for, you know, the SMPO is supposed to be a permanent board, and so is our council, so things could change between councils. So I'm going to wait to actually resign out of the SMPO. And I'm kinda leaning towards if it's, if it makes sense to be a non-voting member, and just be able to at least be in tune to what's going on, see the projects that are being voted on, and, and at least voice our opinions at the meetings. So, that's, I think, where we are right now. So, that's, I think, where we are right now, so more to come on that. And Lieutenant Gary Garner, I have been informed that Lieutenant Garner is leading us on March twentieth, which I believe is next Wednesday. He is moving on and to a new position at a, another police force. And we're gonna miss him. But totally understand the need to do what's best for you and best for your family, and I total support that. So, we hate to see you go, but we totally understand. And thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have right now. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No.
No? Now, these are our updates on our long-range plan goals. Mary Gilroy, Councilwoman Gilroy, have you had any chance to do any, I know we've been very busy?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Sharon and I have had two Zoom calls, we did one on video, with the guy from PNS who was a preferred provider by Southern Software, because they're already integrated into FMS, okay? So, we've walked through their screens, we looked at it both from a residence, you know, what a resident would see, and also what our finance officer would see. There is some cost involved. There is a one-time charge, but there is a monthly charge. And in order to figure out what that charge is, we sent PSN some billing, obviously with no financial data, like zip-a-dah, nothing, but just amounts of bills, so they can see what they're really looking at in terms of the costs they're gonna base that on, percentage, I'm sure. We have another call, or a shout-out from the guy we're working with at PSN, I think it's the twenty-seventh of March. And we'll see what he comes up with for data. There is also, obviously there's a percentage fee if a resident uses a credit card or a debit card. That fee needs to be determined, we're looking, he guessed, the sales rep guessed somewhere three to three and a quarter percent. There's also an ACH fee if you do an e-check. And as Sharon and I talked about it, if somebody pays a small percentage to use a debit card, that's their choice. But if people have always done checks with us, I don't, I didn't feel real good about charging the e-check fee to residents. I think the village needs to pick that up, because if we continue with paper billing and checks, we don't charge people to give us a check, right? I'm not explaining that very well, but you understand what I'm trying to say? So, that, PSN, their module also allows us to email bills, which kinda knocks out the first thing, you know, the cost benefit analysis, email options for water bills. So, on the more after we get the pricing data back. It does, though, if it, if it was something that residents really grasped onto, it's gonna make the utility billing a whole lot easier.
The one thing I think, I think we have to understand, I could be wrong, is that this is gonna come out of the water department budget. So, all these charges and costs are gonna play after you.
Yep.
And, I mean, I, I, if we don't get a high participation rate.
Yeah.
Because people who are doing online bill pay with their banks, I don't know how much.
Sharon's tracking that.
They're going to switch.
That are coming in starting on the fifteenth, she's gonna just tally how many she, how many she gets through bill pay.
And I personally don't agree with the fact that we would take, we would take the charge on paper checks. I just don't, because now, we're basically saying, if you pay us by a check, because that's, the company is making money on that, the bank, I mean, it's, that's something that the company is charging the customer for.
That's fine. We talked about it, we just didn't wanna give a fee to use an e-check, because most people pay by check, no, anyway.
Yeah, but if this company is now stepping in the middle, now we have to pay more because, and plus, there's a monthly fee. Did they say what the monthly fee was?
He guessed one fifty to two hundred, and he offered to do an assumptive proposal, and I kinda said, don't waste your time. I said, we'll give you our numbers, and then you tell us what it's really gonna look like. Because it might be something where we just go, you know, great idea, verge, but it's just not cost-effective. And we, and we think that, you know, go to bill pay or something like that, and we won't know until we get the numbers.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Per month? Because we only, we have about, what, seven or eight hundred accounts?
Seven, eighty-seven.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
I could see if we had thousands.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay, so at least we know what we're.
Yeah, you know, I think once we get the numbers and we lay it all out, we're gonna know whether it's something we should do. And you need to understand, it's not that we didn't hear him in the long-range plan about doing it, but it was not cost-effective, so now is not the time to do it.
That's the whole point of going through it. Thanks, Mary.
Yep.
Onto streets and parks, Councilman Mullin, do you have any? I know you've been gone.
So, now, I have, well, I think one of the issues I helped you about is I will be scheduling a meeting with the Pinehurst Planning and Inspections Director, between you, myself, and Lisa, so we can put together a plan, so that what we can do in terms of our ordinance, what we require from our builders, in terms of what they do in Pinehurst, you know, would they be willing to do inspections for us once we get a drainage plan from a builder? So, that's gonna be, I'm gonna schedule that after Lisa comes back from vacation. And that goes hand in hand with the belt plan for repaving and more so correction of the drainage.
Okay, great.
So, when Lisa gets back, we'll come back. And I'm gonna jump ahead too real quick with public safety, I don't know if Don has anything to say.
Well, why don't we just wait for, are you done with your street?
Yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at right now, so.
Now, moving on to the, it's really, all three of you, public safety, you, Parks and Water, are working on the relocation of the yardways.
Yes, we are.
So, I guess, I've got three names.
I've talked to ones, everybody, um, he needs some information, I wanted him to come out, he'll come out, and give us a quote as to what they would charge for the survey. Got two other names that I need to call and get their quotes, so we can at least start getting our numbers together. Once we get the survey, then we can start figuring out, and Don and I went out one day to look at where we would be putting everything, basically. I got a couple contacts for removing the trees and so forth, and getting quotes in that respect.
Yeah, we'll need the price on the slab, on a compacted slab.
Yep.
And all the graveling in the fence and the roads.
And so if anybody has any names about, for fencing, we need.
Is it chain link, is that?
It's gonna be chain link.
Chain link, major wire?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like we have up here.
Well, actually, no. Remind you my memory, are, is the police impound not gonna be, it's gonna be not part of this?
No.
No.
It's going to be, if anything, oh, it's gonna stay where it is.
Correct, because, I mean, right now, the main concern for us is the fact that.
Travel in and out, the constant traffic, right?
So, if it's just being used for the police comp, comp, um, there's not a problem. No one's going in and out, other than, say, the police and the water department.
Okay.
So, that's why we're just gonna leave that there, so they're not gonna have anything to do with it.
Okay.
We got one car in here for about a year.
Yeah, and is that ever gonna go away? But, yeah, so, I mean, we'll probably, we have to use, in terms of those cement blocks there, we have to use the same company who's in Garthage that we got them from, because the next closest one is in Fayetteville, and they were much higher than Garthage.
Now, have we spoken with the fire department people as far as making sure we don't interfere with their operations?
As long as we don't block that fire anymore, fire.
Okay.
There's no reason we should ever block it.
Are we still thinking about using the parking lot and going across the street? Because we can't have cars lined up.
No.
Along the roadway that leads into the fire department, because if they, if they have a fire call.
Right.
They need to get out.
Right.
So, well, we talked about.
I talked to Chief Shu, he was here, and he said, just come in where they do now, down in the parking lot, and make a road down the park.
Oh, oh, here, okay.
Right down to the landfill. It'll work out perfect, because there's no reasons anyway to ever block that road.
And they'll be able to turn around there and?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have, they're gonna make it big.
Well, we've got two acres over there, and I, one, I think one acre, as you're looking at the property, the acre to the left, and I'm just saying it's an acre, I don't know how much it is, is too sloped. We won't be able to use the left side of it, so we're gonna have to use the right side of it. But we've got enough property, I think, where we can have a turnaround so they can line up.
Go in one gate, out the other gate.
Right.
And will we be able to, I don't wanna say camouflage it, but basically keep it in and out?
We're gonna make sure that we keep the trees, or if we have to plant more trees, or whatever, but yeah, we're gonna keep it. It's not gonna be visible. Yeah, that thing might be, oh my God, I saw something, but, you know, don't matter.
You see the planting that it did on the Majors Building over there? You saw those plants that were put in the Majors Building about that high?
Yeah.
I think it was something like that.
Yeah, well, I was looking at a little.
A little, a little bit.
No, no, we're gonna, we have enough trees on this side next to often, that we could leave there.
Okay.
And not take those down.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure whatever we do, well, and I know you guys are gonna do that, but that we make sure it's as invisible as possible.
And I'm gonna paint it all green.
Be here, Council, what's the rationale for Rubina? Why does it need to be here?
Well, they don't want, they want security with the water tower. Because when the yard people come in, you don't know who they are, nobody checks them, you know, so that's, that's the key.
They don't want anybody possibly, someone hitting one, you know, one of the legs, or, you know.
Well, the other issue is, as we're growing, we're getting more and more people up there, and you've been up there, right? You've dumped, okay, but the problem is, it's getting very crowded, as people are coming in, they're waiting on the side of the road here, there's nowhere for, cars going in and out, they've already hit one of the water pedestals or whatever. So, and again, going around the circle, there's just that big concern about the water tower right there. And we've already had a truck come out and hit the fence, so.
I agree, and I thought that years ago, that it wanted, I wanted to move it.
Yeah, so, again, I think our biggest concern, and if we can't grow it, and we can't make it bigger because of the room that's up there, and we wanna make it bigger because it's getting filled up faster.
Okay.
And so that's why we want to move, yeah. But yeah, I, my other concern was, like I said, we had a truck hit the fence coming out, I don't know, I know all about that one, but anyway.
I think we should make it about twice as wide as it is right now, and deeper also.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so progress is being made on that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on that?
No.
No. Okay. All right, on to mine, which is the Appearance Committee, and I am going to just hold my comments until we get to the new business, because my new business is related to Appearance Committee volunteers.
Okay.
So, on to new business. Mary, do you wanna go over yours?
Yeah, sure. Give everybody kind of an update, you probably already know, but we still have, we have an open position for the admin person. We've struck out a few times. I'm gonna be talking to a headhunter about tenth and tenth to hire, and just laying it out and seeing what the fees are. I worked in that industry several years ago, so, I mean, I can navigate that with no problem. And then Sharon Sanchez is retiring at the end of March. Now, we've threatened to hire to the chair, it didn't work, she's not leaving us for someone else, but she is gonna retire, so. That's, I mean, Sharon's really good at what she does, and she knows a lot of stuff, so we're in the process right now of interviewing. The job is posted on the North Carolina League of Municipalities site, nclm.org, and you can read about it there. It's on Indeed, and I don't know if it's on Moore County Job Site or not, the admin position is on the Moore County Job Site. But, don't worry, your money's gonna be safe. I'm also gonna talk to the headhunter about a tenth, tenth to hire there. In the meantime, we located someone in Sanford who does municipal work for me, does financial work for municipalities. This gal does work for Taylortown, she does work for Bass. Those communities are kind of concordant with us, so Janet, Mayor and I will go out next week and sit down and talk to her. For what she provides, she is, I think, very, I think she's reasonable. I mean, I wasn't, I didn't fall on the floor with her, she said the amount of money, but anyway, just wanted to update you on that. Your money will be safe, things will go on as they're supposed to, but we do have two positions to fill.
Right. Question, we thought maybe having Sharon as a consultant until?
Yeah, we already have.
Yes, she cannot, she cannot work, I think legally, I don't know if it's lega-, I think it might have something to do with the retirement system for thirty days.
Oh, okay.
But she has agreed to do consulting work from time to time.
Okay.
And, and that.
Oh, yes. That's gonna be a big loss.
Definitely, yeah. In the meantime, I'm probably gonna be doing payables and receivables, so.
We have to pay you too?
No, you don't have to pay me, no.
Well, be glad, be glad Moore County's gonna collect our real estate, our property tax, because that takes a beating, blow off, you know, for the next couple months.
Okay, good.
And for those of you who pray, I don't care if you don't, but if you do, ask God to send us the right people, we gotta get them.
Yes, yes. Anything else? Any questions for Mary?
No.
Okay. On my new business, Lisa Kivitt made a suggestion, and I thought it was a very good suggestion, and I wanted to throw it out to the council to see how you felt about it. But right now, there's a memorial to Rick Ryan, who was our chief in the village.
And it's located at the park.
Right, killed in the line of duty some years ago, I'm not exactly sure what year, twenty twelve.
It was twenty twelve, I knew that, it took you very long when it happened.
And his memorial was up at the park. And Lisa had mentioned, what, why wouldn't, or why don't we think about moving it to the front of the, between the village hall and the police station? And you, you had just cleared out a lot of bushes that unrelated to this, but you had just.
I didn't know you were gonna do this, so.
Cleared it out, and I was thinking of maybe doing like a memorial garden there, maybe pollinator garden, something that doesn't need a lot of, you know, it's more natural and perennial flowers and plants, and maybe plant a couple of great myrtles for shade, and maybe get some benches, or have people donate benches, and maybe even like a brick walkway with people by bricks, you know, with their names on it, or whatever, you know? You see, though, you know, kinda like a community area where we can have a little reflection garden, and have, move his memorial there. And I know years ago, we talked about putting up the, and I don't know if I'm gonna get the terminology right, but the long, long blue line flag, the policeman's flag, putting it up there, not on our regular flag pole, but on a flag pole there, and I think that might be kind of a nice setting, or something like that.
I'm wondering if we can move, because there, I don't know if you've been up there, there's a whole area up there that's, I don't know what we'd wanna do with all the cement, or the bricks and stuff, if we could move those, I don't know, again, or if we just wanna start from scratch, or. I don't know, or just maybe take it out and then just put some bench or two up at the park.
Right, right. But anyway, I was thinking that that might be a great, a great project for some citizen, like, Appearance Committee working with the council, if anyone is interested in volunteering for something like that. If not, I would, I'll work on it, with whoever wants to work on it, but I know everyone's busy, we're all busy. But if there's anyone who's interested in working on this project, any citizens, it'd be, I think, a great place for the Appearance Committee to start.
Yeah, it would.
And we'll have to figure out a budget, and, you know, because we will have to do some work, and I'm pretty sure there's sprinklers up there, but I'm not sure.
Up where?
Up in the front here, where these, where those plantings were.
I'd have to have our water guy. I'm not sure if they're.
I think there are.
I think they're hard. I don't know.
I'm driven by, I think I see.
I don't know if they're working.
There's two irrigation lots on the other side of the police station.
Okay.
If we can open those up, I don't know, and see what happens.
Oh, my God, this is Billy Flood.
It's not that difficult, I got my own.
I'll let a water guy take care of that, I got other things.
Is that something that? Is that something that we think we should...
I think it's a great idea.
Because I think the citizens would see it a little bit more, because not everybody gets to the park, but a lot of people definitely come to see it all.
Well, and it's really hidden in the park, it's in the corner, park corner, anything, they have a nice plaque there, but of course, no one sees.
Right.
What they see is the flagpole, that's about it.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Let's do it.
Okay, then I will, I'll head that up until I can find another volunteer.
How many you got now?
None, why, I have you, that's it.
The warrant said you drove, water man, got the water man there.
Okay. All right, that being the last item, I guess, we have no old business. Moving on to the public comment period, so comments on the items that were discussed during this meeting. Please state your name and name and address.
Dan Leary, seventy-three North Shamrock Drive. This is regarding the police car. I don't know the age of it or mileage of it, but has anybody ever looked into, does North Carolina have a lemon law?
Oh, it's old, number one.
It's old, it's old.
Yeah, it wouldn't qualify.
It's got to be seventy-eight years old.
Two thousand eighteen. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
And you have to have a specific number of problems with it.
Well, thirty months is, there are all different problems, because they don't park that, so that's...
Yeah, this are...
They can't fix it in six months.
But to answer your question, there's no lemon law in North Carolina.
No, okay. That was my biggest question, how old is it, and if there are any laws?
Okay.
That's it?
Any other comments? Oh.
What?
I forgot one thing. In light of Lieutenant Garner leaving on three twenty, Michael M. Estida, Sergeant Estida, has accepted the responsibility of acting supervisor until, until we can hire more, more police. So Sergeant Estida is...
It only looks free.
We're thanking you in advance for your, for your acting supervisor, supervision.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, I have a motion, I need a motion to recess the regular meeting and go into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one.
Hold on, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Okay?
So we need to go in the other room, right?
Yes.